The regular Rev. City Council meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM April 19th will now come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Hoag.
Here.
Councilor Koyvenen.
Here.
Councilor Lillis.
Here.
Councilor Hadrava.
Here.
Mayor Visalovich.
Here.
Item C, Minutes of City Council Workshop, April 5th. Minutes of City Council Meeting, April 5th. If no one has any changes or questions, you call for a motion that we approve the minutes of those two meetings. Shalom. Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, Approval of Tonight's Agenda. Kind of a pretty short one tonight. No one has any additions or deletions? Got a call for a motion that we approve the agenda as it is printed?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the motion carried. Appointments and presentation, we don't have any commission appointments or?
No.
Oh, yeah.
No, on the way, it's been a while here.
Okay, anybody from the audience wants to address the council this time? We allow five minutes, but we'll allow time at the end of the meeting. Talk about anything we discussed tonight. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of Payroll, March 15th through the 31st. And a request for Sergeant Jesse Howe to attend the 2016 Canadian-American Drug Conference, Nisswa, Minnesota, May 25th through the 27th. Have a motion that we approve the consent agenda with these two items?
Double.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
You don't have any public hearings at this time? How did the border review hearing go, you guys? You have many people there.
We did not have anyone in attendance, however, we were there in full force. We got to do a lot of talking.
We asked a bunch of questions and of our county officials and...
They gave us some good answers.
They gave us some good answers and we sat there and priced my parcel out and unfortunately, they're not worth what I was hoping they were worth.
It was a long hour.
You know, it's nice having the county there because if someone asks me to follow up, I take care of it, you know, get a hold of the resident.
They have a night, they had a nice setup there, they answered any question we wanted, they punched it in, we could see any house in town, that was kind of neat.
I know, we had them do a few reviews there, it came out to, you know, everybody's satisfaction when they went, because there were some legitimate concerns and they did a good job of taking care of them. We don't have any unfinished business under new business. Recommendation to hire EMT. Guy Spurling, wasn't he on before or in the fire department?
Guy Spurling is on the fire department.
Oh, okay.
And he was an EMT before and we just got through doing a... We had some interviews and we don't need a background check on him because he's working for us now, so we just want to kind of get him through. And then we have another, I want to say five or six people who are doing background checks on, and then we'll have them to bring to the council, you know, when they clear. Another bunch of good candidates.
Boy, it's nice that we're getting some numbers to keep the service moving.
Yeah.
Really important.
So with that being said, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Joe, you make the motion to hire Mr. Spurling and we have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number two. Payments to Cleveland Cliffs for release of restriction covenant on the part of southeast quarter, which is the land by the dog park, so we can complete the sale with Minnesota Power. I just, you know, can't believe in the stuff that comes to bite you around here, like that Ellis location, you own it, but yet you don't, you know? And hopefully that's finally coming to fruition.
But you can't do what you want.
Yeah, I mean, this thing just came up, you know, no one even knew anything, well, they got it all sorted out for us.
Well, that was nice and it's all said and done, finally.
Yep.
And we can move forward.
Because Minnesota Power wants to get to work on that substation, I know they're anxious.
So I'll make that motion and we accept that and pay it.
Do you have a support?
I'll support it.
Motion made by Hadrava, support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G3, Resolution, ordering preparation of a feasibility study for West Second Street in West Evlin and Garfield Street.
Mayor, excuse me, I have a question. Jerry, is it 15th Avenue or the third one? Sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, 15th Avenue and Second, I believe it was. Be all three?
Sure, so what's the blocks for Garfield?
That's all the way from Grant to Vale Avenue, so that'd be the...
All the way up to the school.
400, 500, 600, and 700 blocks.
I'll look at the file resolution.
Okay.
Jerry, with this, we had talked about it, what happened this weekend? Did you look into that, is this going to play any part of this?
Yeah, the piping under Jackson isn't quite as bad as it is under Garfield. Garfield needs it more.
Okay.
That was a storm sword, it wasn't a sand.
Okay.
It was just going to...
Until the next one we get on that one.
Yeah, until we can dig.
Thank you. And we are going to do Garfield in three, four, sections and one, whole one?
We're going to break it down per block.
Break it down per block, great, okay.
Center, right in the center.
With that, I'll make the motion that we send them all for the feasibility study.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support if there's no discussion?
I'll support.
Support by Lillis. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Item number four. Prove benchmark to repair feasibility study for improvements to 801 Hatrick Avenue parking lot, a public parking lot located at 400 block of Jackson Street. 801, that's the Hockey Hall of Fame. And the Jackson Street, that's the City Auditorium. I wonder if they did the rec center once before, because I drove by there, it looks like that is in better condition than the Hall of Fame.
I was up there this morning and I was thinking the same thing. The Hall of Fame can use it, you know, and over, but the, excuse me, the rock, it doesn't look that bad.
The rock don't look that bad.
No, that's, I was kind of wondering. You know, I mean, I could probably make it, you know, another year or so.
Another few years, but like I say, it is that that one is from halfway over to the Hall of Fame, it's pretty broken.
Whoever, excuse me, whoever designed them little noles there with them trees and the rocks there, I'd like to know, I'd like to see them. Because they don't drive a plow truck and they don't park cars. They're the dumbest things I've ever seen. I mean, I know we have rocks around here, but they don't look pretty. You know, they're just there.
We see them every day.
I mean, they're just there and it's just, enough ranting. But I looked at it this morning.
Do you want them removed, part of the property?
I don't know, I mean, everybody'd have to take a look at it, but there's no, there's one tree there and the rest of them is rocks. I mean, you could park probably four or five more cars there if they weren't there.
I guess if you made that part of the feasibility study when we, you know, suggestion maybe.
I think... And we'll just make that, remove those and add alternate.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Are you talking about on the north side of the lot?
You know, right where the Hockey Hall of Fame is, they have their parking and handicap parking. You literally, to back out, if you've got a big truck like mine, you're hitting it. I mean, to me, there's no reason they should have been there. I mean, maybe back then they made the cars smaller and they looked pretty, but a rock is a rock. I mean, I don't see anything that looks good there.
Well, that was the thing when you designed things during that time, you know? But like you say, for handicap parking, in the winter, it's worse.
Yeah, and it blows so much up there and a lot of it, the wind blows into that and it hides and makes a big drift on the other side of it. I mean, if it wasn't there, it'd be, like I says, we could put more cars and stuff in there.
Anything different on the auditorium lot you might think other than?
I looked at the auditorium lot, it doesn't look that bad, it could use a, you know, cover it up a little bit.
There's a couple of spots, I did that too, there's a couple of spots closer to the building that are a little rough.
And that's a parking lot, that's why...
For the most of it, it looks better than almost the rock parking lot does, it's not all that bad.
We had that stripped about four years ago, I remember that. That's still in pretty good shape.
Yeah, if there's anything different you want to do there while Rod's taking notes here.
Yeah. It just looks, you know, that looks good, I mean, it's just, it's a big parking lot and that's what a parking lot is. You know, it should be, you shouldn't have all these diversions in there.
Yeah.
I took a ride this morning and looked at all three of them and that one up there gets used a lot. I was surprised at seven o'clock in the morning how many vehicles were in there. You know, there's...
Curling is really picking up because, boy, that lot has been full.
Yep.
Many times.
And not only that, in the curling summertime, they have all the parties up there, you know, they have some weddings and whatever else, so I mean...
You know, that's the thing, people kind of forget about that.
Yep.
I mean, other uses for that?
It's such a beautiful facility, you know, and it takes such good care of it up there that, you know, hopefully a lot of people utilize it.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is really nice and you see, you kind of forget about it.
Yeah.
It's got more uses than just curling.
Yep.
Anyone have anything, any other discussion? Steph, did we get a motion?
Not yet.
Call for a motion that we approve that feasibility study with the add alternate?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number five, Payment to Innocence Rebecca Blaisdell for the release of land from a judgment lien at 609 Garfield Avenue in Evlin.
Well, this will... I'll make the motion because once we get this done, then we can go through with that piece of property and we can do what we want to do with it. And it didn't take us long to find her, so I'm pretty happy about that and with that, I'll make the motion.
But, now, don't we have to do... Six is contingent on five, am I right on that?
Yeah.
So do we want to do both at the same time with that being said? No?
Well, you got two resolutions. Probably separate them.
But I understand you're saying that you don't want to pay Innocence unless of course we're going to get lowest amount of...
Right.
Like it's up to the day. I mean, you can make them contingent on each other, which means they will not have to pay.
Okay.
Well, I'll make that motion because when I talked to the chief, he told me a while back that this lull just wants out of it.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty sure he's just going to sign off, once we send his check to Innocence Blaisdell, then we should have full control over it and nobody's suing us and we can get on with what we want to do. I'll support that motion.
Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Lillis, and yeah, she was real amenable signing that.
Yeah.
Lot of, lot of work because I was ready to wing it and take a chance, but...
Now we'll be covered all the way.
If she's all right signing off, then that's better yet.
It's not a big loss for us anyway, it's a big gain.
It is.
Yes.
You have any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number six, Resolution accepting donation of property located at 609 Garfield and that is contingent on the signature of Innocence Blaisdell.
And I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? You know, we've already got some of the neighbors up there interested in that property once the demolition is through.
You know, once you get the demolition done and you get the old car out of there and, you know, you clean it up, get a nice lot out of there, I think we'll have no problem, it'll look really nice when...
Mid for the neighborhood?
Yes.
I drove by there, it's not a pretty sight.
What is that, one of the...
The doors on the second level's hanging off.
Oh, golf clubs are sitting on a... I mean, if you actually drove by this place and didn't know the scenario of it, you would swear somebody's living in there. There's a kid's bike in the front, there's a car in the back, I mean...
My aunt and uncle are rolling in their grave.
A few years back, there was an extension cord going from that house across Garfield down an alley and I, that's when I said, what's going on while the police followed it? How long is that going to last with cars driving over in the winter? Then they had a generator running in a garage and you had to tell them to shut it off because no one could sleep because the power was off. It's unbelievable, you know? If you told somebody what went on there, they'd call you a liar.
Yeah. I wouldn't.
Anybody else have any further discussion on this nightmare? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, Resolution accepting donation for use of the Hippodrome. $500 donation. To host the Bantam A Regional Hockey Tournament that was held February 26th through the 28th. Lots of nice...
I really think that's nice, I mean, are we going to send them a letter of thanks? I mean, that's really nice of them to do that.
I would think so.
I mean, you want to include that in the motion there, Joe? Yeah, I would like to include that, a letter of thanks and I'd like to say thank you for the $500 donation and it's very appreciated.
Okay. Do I have a support to that motion?
I'll support it.
Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, Consider quotations for curb and sidewalk replacement. Jerry, it looks like we only had one, eh?
That's par. Yep, we only had one this year, but it came in cheaper than it did last year.
Oh.
We won a little bit.
All right, stretched a dollar.
Yep.
And that's, we committed to $30,000 and we got 10 from the county.
10 from the county to do casar roads, either sidewalk or curb and we've got some good candidates.
Well, that should put a nice dent, 40 grand into the sidewalks stuff around here.
They're bugging away every year.
That's what I...
They're trying to keep going.
That's a good, Commissioner Nelson, that was a nice program there. Helps us out because we do commit a lot of resources to that particular projects every year.
Yeah, what's really nice is we tried to put at least 20,000 in the last years and to be able to do 40,000 this year is, you know, we're doubling it, which is really nice and...
You like to stay ahead of the game.
It goes a long ways.
Yeah.
You know, to keep the streets nice.
In case you got a lean year, you might not be able to do anything, you know, this way you stay up to date.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion that we accept the bid from 3D Concrete and Construction?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That takes care of new business. Anybody have any committee reports or presentations on anything that's going on?
When is the park opening, Gary?
Efron Park?
Yep.
That opens up officially on May 1st. It's a Sunday this year, falls on a Sunday, but that's...
There's already activity in there as of yesterday.
That's what I heard, yeah, I didn't get out there today.
Lights are on.
They're getting things warmed up and it's been a very busy campground.
Getting their summer home ready, I saw.
Yeah, yeah, so you don't have electricity out there, we don't have...
They must be off their battery.
They must.
Brian, you have anything to bring up?
No, I haven't had nothing new since last meeting.
Joe, you got anything?
Um, let's see, the Ellis Golf Course opened up today at 11 o'clock and not the nicest weather, but we've had people out there, the new cart barn, the phone is ringing off the hook out there, so I'm glad we went through with it and I don't know, have you heard anything from John today how it went?
I got a few calls from other people that said the greens were fantastic.
Yeah, that's...
So everybody was impressed, they loved the new cart barn.
Yeah.
I think things went really well.
I'm glad that we did it and I think everybody else will be glad too.
That was a good project.
And then we have a, we're going to have a meeting with the Golf Commission and since we talked with Rod about the Batunis being, you know, at a 15 time or 15 year lull, we're going to see if we can, see what we have in the fund and then see what the city can maybe put towards and try to do some of the cart paths, because there's some that are in really rough shape.
I thought we were going to do some.
No, we are, it's just Jerry's been out there taking a look at stuff to see which ones we definitely have to fix because there was some, they're really rough shape, so...
And we're getting a list together.
And then we'll bring it back to the council and we figure out what we should do or what we can do, just to keep you guys updated.
This is the year to do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, it goes back to like what you said, it says it's going to be at a lull, eventually we're going to have to do it anyway, so if we can do it now and it's cheaper, then we will take a look at it.
Brian, are you healing volcano? We were taking it easy on you tonight.
We're healing and I appreciate the fact that you're taking it easy on me. I guess I have one comment I'd like to make, before I had my surgery, I had the occasion to visit the fire hall, got a little bit of a tour from our fire chief and our EMS director and quite impressed with the work they've done up there, you know, this is all volunteer work and, you know, we, as the council and as a city, had opted to pitch in a few dollars towards that facility and it's really gone a long ways. I guess I would like to thank all the folks that spent so much time and some of their personal skill to help the city out in renovating that building. It looked real well and plans for the future are pretty good too, so. The building's looking good, it looks like we're getting back up the staff again and so I think things are looking pretty good for fire and EMS services.
You guys are doing a good job up there getting the staff up, you know?
I think what we do now is two dalmatians outside of there, because then we'd be like on TV, it's gorgeous.
You can't believe the comments on those doors, people say it looks like a new building.
I had a person, I can't mention any names, they asked me, why did you just paint it red? I looked and I says, okay, what should I say? I was very nice, I said, because it's a fire hall, it's a fire station, it's red, it's supposed to be.
Classic.
Yes, and they accepted that, but my first thought was, wow, I can't believe you just asked me that. But, you know, you get asked questions like that, so you have to be nice and control yourself.
Yeah, what are you going to do?
I still think the dogs would look nice out there.
Dogs.
Even porcelain ones. Okay, enough said.
It looks pretty spiffy with those new doors, I'll tell you that.
It looks nice.
Really nice.
I don't know, they take pride in that building and stuff, that's...
Yep, a lot of people spend a lot of their time in that building, you know, and our chief and assistant chief and they do a lot of work up there.
Brian, anything else?
No, sir.
Brad?
No, sir, I have nothing further tonight.
Well, you know, it's springtime, what usually comes with that are the blighted properties and the ones I really got a concern about are the rental ones. The guy forgets to rake his yard or something because went trout fishing early or whatever, but those ones that are generating an income and letting them look really shabby, I think they owe it to the community to clean them up, dress them up. I think that's kind of the blight focus should be, because like I say, they're running a business out of them. And we got a few on the main street that are too bad, you know, some weeds and stuff like that to take care of. But, you know, I was, I was thinking, don't chase me out of here, you know, this is really a great building, location, I was looking out here, but the only problem is for people getting up here for meetings.
Mm-hmm.
If at some point in time, I wonder if you could ever add on to this building, one floor going out that way in front of the police station? I'd like to see an architectural picture because this is a solid building, you know, it'll last forever.
Mm-hmm.
Something that would look aesthetic.
Just on one floor?
Yeah, I mean, just going out that way, I was looking at that, it'd make it a lot easier for the senior citizens to get in here. You know, a little more conducive for the staff too.
It's just how ideas start.
You know what I mean, I was just, I was just thinking, you know, you're talking something that, you know, might take you five, six years, but I was wondering if we could get an architect to maybe do a picture of it, kind of what we think it should look like?
I would...
An elevator's going to cost you, what, 300, 400,000?
I think we were looking, just a small one at the time was like 250, and then the buildings in such shape, we'd have to cut into the stairs, which you don't want to do that because then you take the history of the building away.
Well, that's the thing, you want to keep it as much as you can, you know, like it was, and they can make like an addition like that.
I can't believe nobody else has ever come up with that idea.
I was just looking at that today, you know, you got the hallway down to the police station there, that would all be enclosed, everything. The only thing you'd have is the gazebo out there and I don't see a lot of traffic in there, because you're never going to build a new city hall.
We could move that gazebo, one of the parks could probably use it.
You know, we looked at that and it was too flimsy.
Yeah, it might fall apart, that's why we ended up with that log one up there.
Okay.
That one you could move. That's solid.
Yeah.
And the price was pretty good compared to those others. Yeah, I was thinking about that because what would you replace this building with? Some metal tin building?
It's hard to replace building, these buildings like this, they're, they're a hundred years and they're solid.
And comment to your, you know, idea about that? I think maybe we should explore like what the Elks did, put a lift exterior to the building? We can look at that, you know, we have, maybe make the sidewalk bigger.
We, I think we checked into that too, but we were still talking a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Even if they went out there, then you're tearing into the walls there because this building has been kept up.
See, we're talking 12 years ago, that's why these cameras were put downstairs, so if somebody wanted to wheel themselves in, we could have a two-way conversation going back and forth. That was a quick fit, fit that was underneath a thousand dollars, because we looked at putting an elevator up the side and we looked at it, put, the only place you could structurally put it was in the stairs and we're anywhere from 250,000 to 500,000 dollars.
I mean, you can go to one of these back windows, I mean, you're not taking a whole lot of the brickwork out, I mean, you're going two and a half, two feet, you know?
Well, it doesn't hurt to get another, you know, as long as we're asking for an architect to design.
Because that's probably...
It won't hurt to ask for that also.
Most cost-effective way to go.
I mean, if the Elks did it, and they're nonprofit.
But that's been a long time, Brian.
I mean, those...
It's been there almost 20 years already, that's way cheaper than probably the new ones will be now.
You know, if you had a lot of people wanting to come to a meeting, that takes time for them to get up there because it's not real fast.
Don't really know that until we investigate it though.
Yeah.
We should investigate.
That way you can keep the building as aesthetic as you can like it is, because what did you replace it with, from tin, tin building, you know? Tin building, you know?
We were sitting, I think it was last week or week before, we had a meeting up here and I think they had a meeting in here, so I'm out there sitting on that bed and I think, or bench, and I think Steph was there and I'm looking up if this building could talk and it stayed, you know, the old courtroom here and, I mean, it's just, there are a lot of people traveled through these halls.
Yeah. That was our entertainment, used to come up here and watch the speeding tickets, all